Welcome. Hi, everybody. My name is Claudia Puig and I'm the president of the Los Angeles Film Critics Association, and I'm a critic on NPR's Film Week. And today I am serving as your moderator for this town hall. Thank you so much for joining us today. And this is a very important event that will examine the need to develop original content that targets the often overlooked bilingual, bicultural audience. A few housekeeping items before we start. Please note that the chat feature has been turned off. And if you'd like to ask questions of our panelists, and there'll be an opportunity to do so, please send your questions through the Q&amp;A box. We'd love to hear from you. Also note that this event is being recorded. And we will have simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, which can be accessed by pressing the world icon at the bottom of your screen. So just let me start with just a little bit of context and some facts that may, some of you may be familiar with. These are facts about the bilingual, bicultural Latinx population. There are 62 million Latinos in the US. And today, 67% are US-born. 55% of Hispanics make up the 1.5, 2.0 generations of Latinx folks. We came as children or were born here with at least one foreign-born parent. They comprise the, this is what comprises the bilingual, bicultural audience. This audience uses more streaming services and are more likely to do so on their cell phones and computers. Most importantly, we, all of us, live a duality that few discern and are highly influential. And yet, the majority of media companies are not targeting us. So it's important to develop content that will resonate with the audience. And I know personally, this is important to me in that I am, my parents were in Mexico. I was born here in California. And I've lived a duality since childhood. I went to a predominantly white Anglo school and was, you know, called a tacon enchilada and, you know, had my accent made fun of. So just to stay below the radar, I lost that accent. And I only spoke Spanish with my grandmother and felt embarrassed. And I wish Nuestra TV had been around when I was younger so that, you know, you'd get a sense that that bilingual duality was not just you. I would not have felt so alone. I would have felt I belonged from early on. So I'm so glad that others will have a chance to grow up with this streaming service. And now I'd like to introduce Banano. Alberto Banano Pardo, the co-founder and CEO of Adsmovil Nuestra TV, a free video streaming service created to entertain, inform, and empower Hispanic audiences across cultural diversity, generations, languages, and devices. And he's also the founder of Adsmovil, a minority-owned and certified leading pioneer in Hispanic mobile advertising and digital media. So Banano, tell us why Nuestra TV and why now?
Claudia, thank you so much. This event is very important for us. And to give you a quick response, the first one, why? And I think I have a couple of points here. The first one, of course, because it's a good business. We see it as a very good business. But the most important is that, as you mentioned before, Latinos are very important here in the US. We are the second-largest population after the white Americans. But it doesn't look the same when it comes to content, relevant content for TV. Well, I mean, what we, what we see is that we are underrepresented in terms of the amount of content prepared for Hispanics. So we, of course, for us, to be a channel, a distribution channel, more than any type of content, as you mentioned, as an entertainment platform to serve the Latino community. So that's the most important reason that we decided to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And why now? Because right now is the moment. I think what is happening today in the TV industry is unique. The technology is really starting to impact the industry and it's gonna transform it. And I think we wanna be a part of that transformation, which I think there's the big opportunities to be on this new wave in the future of the TV setting up right now. And we wanna be a part of the future of the TV in the US, definitely.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you so much, Banano. And let's meet the creators that are changing the landscape of Hispanic streaming TV. Beatriz Acevedo is the co-founder and CEO of Suma Wealth, a leading financial technology company devoted to increasing prosperity, opportunity, and financial inclusion for young US-born Latinos. She began a career in radio and later television, earning three Emmys, not just one or two, but three. MTV Music Award, a Media Correspondent Award, among others. And she was also the co-founder and president of Mitu, the leading digital media brand for young US Latinos. Welcome, Beatriz. Tania Torres and Lily Becerra are co-founders of reality, road trip, Latina-approved Buenprovecho. Tania is also a host and producer for the podcast All Things Latina, where she empowers and educates thousands of Latinas every month. And she holds an MBA in entrepreneurship and is a second-generation Salvadoran American, born and raised in Los Angeles. Lily is a multimedia professional with over 10 years of experience working in both broadcast and digital. When she's not working on Latina-approved, you can find her performing stand-up at a local comedy club. Or at least those of us who live in LA can, right? Or maybe you travel. Lily is a second-generation Mexican-American, also born and raised in Los Angeles. Manny Ruiz is the co-founder of Brilla Media Ventures and the editorial director and executive producer for Nuestros Stories. Nuestros Stories is the first multimedia digital platform devoted to storytelling focused on Latino origins and histories. Manny has built a reputation for building and selling innovative Latino media companies, which in the past 12 years have included three exits featuring Hispanicize, Hispanic PR Wire, and the Hispanic Digital Network, among others. And our final panelist, last but not least, Maria Lopez Tuena. She's the CMO of Adsmovil and creator of Marivi, the Master Navigator series. Maria is an award-winning marketer with extensive experience in technology, digital media, and marketing. Prior to joining Adsmovil, she served as CMO of Entrovisión Communications and a CMO of Pulpo Media. Tuena's accolades include receiving the Ad Color Award in 2009 for her groundbreaking achievement in identifying, segmenting, reaching, and engaging bilingual, bicultural Hispanics while at McCann World Group. She holds an MA in mass communications. So as you can see, this is gonna be a really interesting panel. Before we hear from our illustrious panelists, let's watch a video that show a little bit about their work.
This is Batman, fierce defender of Gotham, epic comic book legend, one of Hollywood's biggest stars. But did you know the Cape Crusader was inspired by Latino superheroes?
Hi, I'm Manny Ruiz, and I'm the co-founder and publisher of Nuestros Stories. At Nuestros Stories, we're devoted to telling the origin stories of Latinos in the US. And we're talking about everything from how did we get the chancleta to the lowrider, the quince's, and all these traditions or fads or foods that really make up this Latino community and the things that we treasure and like and share. This platform is very unique because we use snackable content, a beautiful website, and of course, wonderful social media presence to tell these stories daily. And we're now telling it on Nuestra TV. We're very proud of the partnership with Nuestra TV. And we hope you will support what we're doing with Nuestros Stories and Nuestra TV. Thank you.
Latina-approved is authentic and offers refreshing, inclusive content to all Latinas from different walks of life.
Latina-approved knows how to connect and speak to the first and second-generation US Latinas.
Being daughters of immigrants, we felt empowered to unite and redefine the narrative of what it means to be Latina.
Cultura.
Empowerment.
Somos Latina-approved.
Meet Mia. She loves Taco Tuesdays and going to Hapier with her friends. But she also lives paycheck to paycheck. One day, Mia stumbles across a video from Suma. It makes her hello-out. Someone gets her humor, and it talks about something that's always on her mind: money. Suma feels like joking with your bestie while receiving life wisdom from your grandma. She subscribes through the newsletter and downloads the Suma app. She signs up for a free financial checkup, which is like getting a checkup at the doctors, but for her money. Mia is surprised to find out 80% of her income is spent on food and dining. Ay, Mia, looks like tacos aren't just for Tuesdays. This makes Mia want to learn more. She finds out exactly how much money she has saved, what her total net worth is, and something called debt-to-income. It's not only cool to have everything easily laid out for her, but to have it all in one place, right in her hands. No one has ever explained money to her like that. Suma is different. Suma gets her.
Once upon a time, there was a foreign native named Maria Victoria de la Paz Avascal. Her family called her Marivi. Her parents came to the US from a Latin American country. And Marivi was born shortly after they arrived here, making her the first Americana in the history of her familia. As she matured, this gave her a sense of uneasiness and confusion and a deep desire to belong somewhere. These feelings arose abruptly when she started her first day of school, which is where Marivi's journey truly begins. The animated Marivi Master Navigator series is a longitudinal group of stories that follow Marivi and the different members of her Hispanic family through life in the US. It takes place during Marivi's elementary school years, where the viewer can authentically experience what it's like to live in an immigrant family. Marivi and her immigrant parents have two conflicting goals. The parents don't want her to lose her language and Latino roots, nor her ties to her family. And she doesn't want to be different. She wants to be like her friends. She just wants to belong. All immigrant children see themselves in Marivi. Her truths are universal.
Nuestra TV, it's ours. So let's start with Beatriz. I want to find out a little bit about your motivation behind Suma Wealth.
Yes, of course. Well, listen, I have been a big advocate of media representation, as you know, for most of my career. I feel like the stories that we tell or we don't tell are the stories that we see not only impact how others perceive us, but how we perceive ourselves and how big we think that we can aspire to be or to dream. But when the pandemic hit and seeing how our community was the hardest hit, not just with deaths, but also with economic hardship, I really was looking into finding a company that would truly help our community get out of this financial hardship in a way that was in culture, right? And we'll, I'm sure we'll talk a lot about that. And we've seen from all the panelists how important that is. We are Latinos, but we are also English-dominated. So I couldn't really find it. The traditional fintech companies that have amazing products see Latinos as an afterthought. Or they say, I translated my website. I don't know why young Latinos aren't just flocking to me. It's like wrong strategy. So I, and then Latino founders who are in fintech are very hyper-focused on just the immigrants, which is a very different experience, as we know, as a bilingual, bicultural. So looking into our community and seeing how, you know, you gave all the numbers, how we are heavily represented when it comes to, you know, just numbers in our community. But certainly how we are the best consumers and the worst investors or people who save any sort of money for an emergency. You know, I wanted to really build something that gave Latinos true power. And until we have economic power, no matter how many millions we are, no matter how much we consume, no matter how much GDP growth we contribute to, we're gonna have no power. So Suma really is, you know, hopefully my last startup and hopefully my legacy, where I can really point at how we helped our community close this wealth gap and start building generational wealth, potentially in our, in our community, in a way that's never been done with in-culture content, tools, and products and services.
Fantastic. For Tania and Lily, first, congratulations on this exciting venture. As co-producers, what's been your biggest surprise throughout the process of creating, launching, and promoting Latina-approved Buenprovecho?
Great question. Thank you so much. One of the things that really has been standing out as we're producing Buenprovecho is really connecting with those, with the stories of the Latino business owners, with the Latino restaurant owners, and to find how much in common we have with those stories, because it all leads to family, to culture, and just wanting to be our best while we're embracing our new generations to come. So I feel like that's been one of the best things while we're producing Buenprovecho.
Yeah, and just to, just to echo that, it's been such an amazing journey so far and really just connecting with all of these business owners, just like Tania's saying. And it's been amazing to see how excited they get that we're giving them a platform where they can be recognized and they can share their, their stories and their journeys. So it's been, we can't wait for this to launch with on Nuestra TV and excited for everyone to see.
Fantastic. Manny, I'm fascinated by origin stories and personal histories, and I know I'm not alone. What makes Nuestros Stories unique? And what kinds of stories are you exploring? Oh, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, Claudia. Well, first of all, Nuestros Stories was born from a dream to something that I began many years ago with my wife when we created Hispanicize, which was to unify the Latino community and to empower us by sharing our stories and helping understand, bring understanding. And Nuestros Stories is definitely devoted to origin stories and histories. And in that, it's a unicorn in the media space. It's extremely unique. It's also unique because we're working, you know, we're collaborating with cultural institutions, with media companies. Banano and Nuestra TV and Adsmovil, by the way, incredible, because he's a, he's an early investor in our company as well. We're working with celebrities and leaders. And, you know, we're leveraging all of these partnerships and a lot of these historically go back to Hispanicize years to, through social media and digital content, to basically build, we call it the multimedia Wikipedia of Latino origin and history. But the big picture is that we want to reverse the stereotypes about the Latino narrative, which is, as you guys know, Latinos really have a bad rap in terms of how people perceive us unfairly. And we believe that we can reverse it by, A, creating this incredibly imaginative, very, very shareable, incredible content that will now appear on Nuestra TV and that are also part of our daily platforms on our website, nestorstories.com, and on TikTok, et cetera. So there is a big picture to this. This is a, this is a company that, for me, of all the things I've ever done in my life, it's about building a legacy for our Latino community. And we're building it by creating the biggest treasure chest of content and of stories ever done, but focused on origins and histories as an angle.
Great. Maria, it's wonderful to see a show that can resonate with young children and entire Latinx families. When and how did you come up with the idea for Marivi, the Master Navigator?
Oh, thank you, Claudia, and thank you for all being here, all of those attendees. The when was about 15 years ago, so I joke it's your quinceañera, so it's perfect timing. It was, it was really with the realization that we, the bilingual, bicultural brands, tend to forget us because we are English-language dominant many times. So the assumption is made, well, the English-language marketing is reaching you. And my argument was always, well, I'm not brand loyal, so it's not touching me. And that's what, that was really the impetus of all of this. I, on my, in my career, I did a study while I was at McCann to try to find out what are the distinctions of the bilingual, bicultural that we all need to know about. And the thesis was that as children of immigrants, we become the Sherpas for our foreign-born parents. We translate the language. We decode the ethos, which is totally different. We all grew up in very collective homes where the ethos was all about family and community over self. And we'd go to our American school and we were taught to be self-reliant. There is no greater cultural clash than that. So we grew up with a lot of hybridity, as we talked about. And in the media, I never saw myself. I joked with my friends, I said, you know, I was never Marcia Brady, but I certainly was never Veronica the damsel in distress in the Spanish de la novela. I was smack in the middle and overshadowed by both of them. So taking the knowledge I knew from my career that we were Sherpas and realizing that as children, we never saw ourselves in the media in the role of Sherpa, was critical as children grow up because they're alone and there's no, no, no sadder feeling than feeling like you don't belong and that you're not validated. So that the objective here is to have children see themselves early in the media and to identify with a character that is going through their life experiences, their struggles, their joys, their sadness, all of it, not to sugarcoat it, but to give an authentic representation of what it's like. That's the, that's the reason for Marivi.
That's a great reason. So this question is for all of the panelists. It's obvious that this segment of the population cannot continue to be overlooked or ignored. So what's the thing you want people to know about why and how you choose to address this audience? Why and how specifically? And whoever wants to jump in first? Or I'll call on you.
I'll, I'll jump in. I'm happy to jump in. Yeah, the, the why is the need for validation. I really think a lot of the social ills in our society are tied to children or us not seeing ourselves depicted in a positive role or in a positive way in media. I mean, that's nothing new, but I think we don't talk about it enough. And I think it needs to start at a very early age, because those are your formative years, right? That's when you're maturing and you're different in first grade than you are in sixth grade. So do you have different issues that you need to address and different life experiences that are interpreted completely differently in a Latino household than they are in a non-Latino household? So ensuring that there is validation at every step of that journey, that key life events are celebrated authentically, mirroring back that individual and their life experience, only empowers us. It weakens us if we don't have that reflected back in our lives.
Yeah, I, I want to take the, the approach that, obviously, everything Maria said, I fully agree with. But I want to go on the business side, right? So obviously, as Latinos, we, we need to belong. We want to see ourselves represented, reflected, all the things we know. But on the business side, I want people to understand that we are absolutely not charity. You know, being in business with us is incredible business. If you, if you look at the, at the numbers from the data, there is no company that's going to be able to survive or to thrive, certainly in the future, if they're not, if they're not in business with our demographic. And it's very, very critical that they fully understand, from your numbers at the beginning, Claudia, that what they thought of who we were 50 years ago, where the growth was coming from immigration, is not the reality today. Today, the growth is coming from US-born, American Latinos, who are very, very young, 19 years on average for the US-born, entering the workforce at the most accelerated rate, enrolled in college at the most accelerated rate, Latinas launching more companies than anywhere. This is, this is it. I mean, this is the backbone of the American economy. We see it now being, we're our own country. We know from the LDC data from a few weeks back that we'd be the fifth-largest economy in the world. So not being in business with Latinos, particularly young bilingual, bicultural Latinos, will be the death of any company in this country. So not charity, but your biggest business opportunity.
Yeah, I noticed that in your, in the Suma portion of the video, you have that young woman who is out there consuming and going out constantly. And, you know, that's who we are. We are, we are definitely major consumers. We over-index at the box office, you know, and to their own peril if they ignore us, absolutely. I kind of want to ask you all a question I've asked my students sometimes when I, when I've taught a class. When the first time was that you saw yourself on screen? And maybe, you know, well, let's, let's start with Manny. When did you first saw yourself?
It was, it was an 80, it was a 70s show called Chico and the Man, for those of you that are old enough to remember. And I actually, it was one of my favorite shows. And obviously, the, the young man that was the Latino lead had a very tragic ending to his life, but I loved that show. And I was like, wow, that, that guy looks and sounds like my family, like my cousin or something. He was a little older than me. So it was, it was really interesting. And then I remember in the early 80s, when Paul Rodriguez had a TV show. And I was like, oh my God, there's a, it's funny, because I was not, I was not trying to identify as Latino. When I was young, I was trying to identify as more, you know, American, right? Quote-unquote. And yet, that show drew me. But, you know, just to address your earlier question, Claudia, one of the reasons what, why we feel so passionate about what we're doing with Nuestros Stories, and it's funny, because this is what Banano and me, together, a friend of ours introduces and said, hey, we, I can't tell you what's going on, but you have something in common. When you both find out what it is, something's gonna happen. And we reveal to each other, like, hey, I'm launching Nuestra TV. And I'm like, hey, I'm launching Nuestros Stories. What are we doing in this breakfast meeting? And obviously, the rest is history. But what brought us to do this and the why, right? Is that we see, I see a tremendous opportunity to create an imaginative, extremely creative, well-done storytelling platform that finally helps unite people like my wife and I, Cuban and Mexicans, you know? We make some really good stuff together, where we, where we can get along, where we understand each other. And that's one of the things about Nuestros Stories, is that we refuse to let ideology and all the divisions that's happening in the country contaminate the storytelling that's gonna come here. So this is why, this is actually, I probably feel like Beatriz, I heard her talking recently, that she thought she was kind of retired from some of this entrepreneurship thing. I thought I was retired from anything to do with Hispanic, after all of the different things I've done in media. But when we came up with the idea for Nuestros Stories, I said, oh my God, this really would make an impact. And so we're very, that's what really drove us to do this as well.
Great. I want to, so Tania and Lily, like, when was the first time you saw yourself on screen?
So the first time that I can remember was really Jane the Virgin. So, and the reason was because of her being English dom, living in a Spanish-dominated household. And she was able to communicate with her grandma in Spanish, understand her in Spanish. However, in the outside world, she communicated in English. And when I saw that, I'm like, I can totally relate to this. And really just seeing how important it is for a bi-cultural, bilingual Latina in the US, second generation, to be represented, is really what has led to the creation of Latina-approved and really paving a way for those next generations so they can see how they too can create their own path and their own journeys by simply being their authentic selves while embracing their culture. And what, you know, one of the main reasons was because I felt we were overlooked. We were overseen. And it's like, hey, the children of immigrants are here, and that we also want a place. So we're really proud of how far Latina-approved has come. And we're excited to continue representing all Latinas in the US that can resonate with who we are, because, you know, at the end, we're, we're one, so.
Yeah, I was, that's funny. I was gonna say Jane the Virgin, too. And that was much later in our adult life.
I was gonna say, you weren't a child then, so yeah, yeah.
I was not a child. But I think that's what made Jane the Virgin so special and so exciting, because finally, there was something, there was someone that looked like us, that had our experience growing up. And we see more and more each day with our Latina-approved audience that they're hungry. They're hungry for more, for more, and to be represented and to show that we're everything. We're business owners, we're, we're moms, we're, we're students, we're teachers, we're everything. So that's our mission, really, to spotlight their stories.
Absolutely. We're everything, and we're connected, and yet, we're not monolithic. So it's really, yeah, it's so wonderful. Maria, how about you?
I, I was gonna say all of the above, definitely Jane the Virgin. Before that, Pretty Prince, Chico and the Man, for sure. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna go a little further and just say, from a household perspective, the first time I saw I Love Lucy, I thought, oh, oh my God, I'm not alone. I mean, this is, I hear this accent, I hear this, you know, I hear this.
Ricky Ricardo was, was my uncle, I felt like, yeah.
Yes, yes, I loved him. I loved him. And so I thought that that was, that was really the first time, at least, I had some, some hint of, there might be a mirror somewhere in the future. And I just want to add, Claudia, because that was a great question, by the way. I just wanted to add to what Ben was saying, what Manny was saying. You know, in terms of the, the business engine behind the economy, absolutely, the Hispanic market. And the ROI that the bilingual, bicultural deliver to brands is so much greater because they hold on to that Sherpa role their whole lives. because they hold on to that Sherpa role their whole lives. And as they mature, their sphere of influence becomes culturally agnostic. It's not just Latino, it's Americano too. So we're constantly influencing and driving a greater ROI because we can share it in Spanish and in English. And um, another reason to look at this cohort since this is about the bilingual, bicultural.
Yeah, never one-to-one ROI, always one-to-one.
One-to-many, one-to-many. Beatriz, how about you? For the first time you saw yourself on screen?
I grew up, I grew up in Mexico, so I always saw.
Ah, you all, okay.
So I don't, um, I'm not US-born, I'm an immigrant and I came to the US later in life. Um, I am a border girl. So you know, I, I really had one foot in one country and the other one in another. So I could see myself represented. I mean, we can talk about all the problems with Mexican media and colorism and how, you know, obviously the dark skin talent was always sort of like the evil, the poor, the non-prominent and then the blonde talent or the white talent were, were the ones who had the leads in, in these soaps or in these shows. So that's a whole other, a whole other conversation. But I definitely saw myself represented as a kid from an, from an early on, on age. It wasn't until I came here and I started to learn about what privilege was, what being a white Latina was, why, what being white passing, what things I never grew up with in, in my own country. I never felt like the other because everybody was like me. And then when I came here, I think I arrogantly took my difference as my superpower. Um, instead of taking my difference as uh, as something that made me less of, um, as most people who are born here feel when they're the only ones in a room or the first ones in a room. I sort of arrogantly felt, oh, this is amazing, right? In a, in a room full of sameness, I get to be, you know, the very loud, passionate uh, Latina in the room that's gonna definitely stand out. So um, I, I use my difference always as sort of like my source of, of power.
That sounds like wisdom, not arrogance to me.
A little of both.
A good blend. Um, yeah, for me, it was like real women have curves. And I was older than America Ferrera, but I'd never, with the exception of maybe watching the I Love Lucy and seeing my uncle. You know, I'd never seen myself. Um, so yeah, I think it's, and I think that kids growing up now are gonna have a different experience, especially with Nostalgic Stories and, you know, all the other uh, storytelling that's gonna be happening. Um, I wanna encourage the audience to send in their questions. Um, but I will go on because I have plenty of my own. Um, so speaking of all of this and our depiction, uh, Manny, I wanted to ask you, um, first of all, how did we get the chancla? Do you have the answer to that?
No, I don't. I don't have it yet. Uh, there is a lot of debate because uh, actually the chancla is pretty universal to other cultures. Uh, we've seen uh, remnants of that in an Arab culture. Uh, there's other folks that argue that it came from Europe. But certainly if other people had the chancla, nobody does chancla like Latinos. So we wanna find out, we, we will, uh, we do have it as one of our program documentaries. But I can tell you, you know, uh, the origins of La Cucaracha, for example, which is part of a, of a new channel that we launched uh, called, so within Nostalgic Stories, there are different verticals that are now gonna become consistent channels. One of them is called That Latino Song. The first documentary that we did about one specific song is about La Cucaracha, you know? Everybody knows La Cucaracha, but nobody really knows the story of it that well. Apparently La Cucaracha has a couple of origin stories, but apparently the most apparent, the most consistent one is that La Cucaracha was born as a, an uh, an analogy for the women that during the Mexican Revolution would follow their husbands and their boyfriends into the, the battlefields and kinda were straggling around like, you know, practically without a leg, right? Cause they were, they were uh, basically living without a home. They were living somewhere in camps. And so there's uh, proof that in the early 1800s, we have that in our, in our documentary. I'm sorry, 1800 notes in the 19, like 1913, 1914, somebody actually printed the song lyrics. And like in every part of the song, you're seeing the mention of the women, the Mexicana, the, they're, they're, they're given many different nicknames, but it's clearly a reference to women. There's other variations of that, but you know, who knew, right? That a song that seems so innocent about La Cucaracha, La Cucaracha, you know, that that song has a direct connection to our history and to the Mexican-American Revolution. I mean, the Mexican Revolution and some of it, which of course would spill over into, into the now US, right? Depending how you look at it. So there's a lot of stories like that. The Latino origins of Batman. We did that with McDonald's uh, as part of a program called Spotlight Donado, which is, is meant to tell the unknown stories and really lineage of Latinos in Hollywood and in entertainment. It's part of a bigger initiative. We did something this about the Latino origins of Batman. A lot of people don't know that Batman was inspired by Zorro. And Zorro was inspired by a uh, Mexican-American Robin Hood from the 1800s. So Batman's grandfather was Latino, you know? It's mind-blowing. So those are the kinds of stories that we are telling through these type of series on the songs. We have another series that's gonna come up called Artistically Latino. It's the origin of every major Latino painting and mural uh, in history. And we have thousands and thousands of origin stories to tell. So it's really exciting and we, we'd love to work, we're, we're very much looking forward to how this is gonna manifest with Nostalgic Stories and with other partners that we are aligning. Cause this content unifies and it's fun and it's not political. It's very shareable.
I love that idea of Batman's grandfather. Uh, I hope somebody from Marvel is listening and we're gonna see Murciélago hombre or something along those lines. Um, again, I wanna encourage people to uh, use the Q and A function to send me your questions. Um, so um, Maria, tell us a little bit about the Marivi series in terms of the longitudinal aspect and um, you know, why that matters?
Why that matters, yes. Um, so you know, it's, it's always easier just to create a character in a storyline based in one moment in time and you can go very deep in that moment. Um, but I felt that it was very important because as kids mature, they change so quickly. They don't stay static. And there's so many differences in first grade and third grade and sixth grade that I felt these, I felt that all Latino kids do need a character that they can carry through their childhood to support them, to mirror them, um, to reflect back what they're going through and to not feel alone. I think that's really the biggest thing. It's all about validation. Validate that individual as they're growing up. Because many times, um, you know, kids can be tough with each other and feeling like an outsider is not a positive feeling. And some people, some get depressed, some go inward, some then behave um, in a, in a manner that's not scholarly. So I think there was just a lot of opportunity and I, I've, I've done a lot of work with kids that are children of immigrants and I see their challenges. Um, you know, in the first story of, of Marivi, she gets to school where that culture class happens for the very first time. And the teacher can't pronounce her name, which is Maria Victoria de la Paz a Pascal. So she just changes her name to Mary Paz. And you know, everyone chuckles when they see that. And it's like, there's a deep psychological meaning to that. You can't change someone's name because you're telling them you're not good enough as you are. And that's how it's interpreted in childhood too. So um, you, there are a lot of elements in each of the stories that are really cultural uh, teaching points. And um, they're there to help the reader understand, oh, this is my experience. But to help others, the, the books are, and the stories are gonna be in English with winks in Spanish or dialogue in Spanish when it would happen organically in a household, when you're talking to your parents or your abuelita, you know? Um, so it, the whole objective is, is to make sure that those key events that happen um, are, are studied versus just glanced over and glossed over, right? So um, it's longitudinal for that purpose because I want, I want kids also to not just follow her, but to be able to come in at any point in their grade school years and pick her up. And now this is me.
And they can grow up with her, yeah.
And that they grew up with her. And you know, Claudia, I, I do readings for schools all the time. And I've had, my, my objective always was to make sure that she crossed all cultures, that it wasn't just a Latino story. And I had two events happen to me on two Zoom calls not too long ago. One was when I finished the reading, a little boy came up to the camera and he said, Senora Maria. A little boy, he said, yo soy Marivi, like I am Marivi, a little boy, which, which, if that wasn't enough to break my heart. But then two weeks later, I'm doing a reading to a completely different school. And when I finished, this girl comes up to the camera and she said, uh, Miss Trina, my name is Salma. My parents are from Egypt. I am Marivi. And it just touched me so deeply because it, these are universal truths. These aren't just owned by Latinos. This is a story of all bicultural's where their parents come from a different country, different language, different ethos. And they have to assimilate and they don't really, they tend to embrace their, that, that, their culture later in life through that retro acculturation process, right? So it's like this is helping them kinda get there on their journey.
I love that. Retro acculturation process. I think we've all gone through that. I know I did.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, we have a question here from uh, an audience member, Herson Breciado. He wants to know how we continue to create content that connects with younger Latinos and those who are next, while keeping a connection to the culture that makes us unique from our countries of origin with, without creating uh, them and us. Uh, so it sounds like kind of what we were just talking about. How do we hold on to that connection? How do we adapt, acculturate? Um, so who wants to tackle that?
I'll, 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 I'll start. Um, I mean, we, we did that with pretty good success at, at Me Too. And I know Me Too continues to do that. Um, you know, though we were hyper-focused on young Latinos, our audience was everybody. You know, we had moms and abuelitas and tias and tios, um, really uh, feel connected to the content. And I think that, you know, nostalgia works really, really well. Um, how you grew up with things that you remember, whether you heard or you ate or you saw from your older family members. Um, but then now given like, sort of like a spin on, on pop culture, always worked for us. So really leaning very, very hard into our Latinidad, um, on that nostalgia piece mixed with what's pop cultural today, really is able to connect those generations. Cause obviously if you're older like me, I'd be like, oh yeah, I get that Jose Jose joke, which my child might not, but it's mixed with a Bad Bunny reference and then it ties it all together. Um, so there's definitely ways to do that, um, where you're able to, to really bridge that multi-generational household or audience, um, with the content that, that you do. Um, so it's, it's possible, uh, without being divisive. And also you have to just be super authentic, right? Like we would if, if there was a mom or an abuela who honestly was gonna speak Spanish, we let them speak in Spanish. Um, and the kids would speak in English and then we'd subtitle for whoever needs it, right? Um, so we, we just lean hard into authenticity. And I think that's the best way to be able to bridge those generations.
Absolutely. You never go wrong by leaning hard into authenticity. Tanya, you were gonna say?
Yes. So one, one of the ways, totally agree, um, with what Yefi said. And one of the things that Latina approves, you know, we take a lot of pride in just simply putting out there the stories, right, of different generations and showcasing different Latinos or Latinas making an impact within our community. So whether it's our local street vendor that we're highlighting, you know, first generation, they're out here working hard. Or whether it's simply sharing a story of success of someone, of doing something great in our community. I feel like that type of content really helps stay connected to our roots and who we are, while also integrating the future and looking ahead, um, of what's to come. So that, that's something that's really important for us, continuing to spotlight these stories.
Yeah. Oh, go on Manny, no, please.
No, I was just gonna add that, you know, uh, when you talk about origins and histories and, and things like that, it, it could get dicey, right? Cause there's, there's, there's quite a variety of, of stories and they don't always, they don't always mesh well with everybody, right? In terms of the narrative for that. So it's really challenging sometimes to think about it. But I think what we do with Nostalgic Stories is that we really, because we are only Latino, we're not pro any, you know, Democrats, Republicans, we don't care about the ideology. We, what we care about is where did something come from? As best as we can authentically, historically determine, right? And what has that uh, done in terms of an impacting in our culture, whether it's our food, our fashion? Um, even something as funny or depending how you feel it, you know, the chancla, right? Um, so it, for us, it's important to be inclusive, but not inclusive in a way that's convenient for somebody that's liberal or conservative, in a way that is actually inclusive, like for real. Regardless of ideology, we're gonna tell those stories so that we can truly be a reflection of the diversity of our community. And so that's a challenge that we have as storytellers. And I just wanna say in advance for anybody that's listening, if you ever are offended because you see a story that you're like, hey, well, we shouldn't tell that story. We should, listen, it's all about telling everybody's story. That's the only way we can, we can actually find a place where we can at least all find good content that's authentic and it's telling these stories that need to be told. Cause we have great, great stories to tell.
Yeah, you bring up a really interesting point because I think the dominant media likes to focus on us, on the, the differences. And lately it's sort of like dividing us. It's like, okay, Latinos are mostly Republicans or this, or they're mostly Democrats. Or they're, you know, that's how they like to look at us. Um, but there's so much more. And it's not just about whatever political block people fall into. I think there's so much that transcends that in our culture. Um, Lily, I wanted to ask you, what makes a location Latina-approved?
That's a great question. Um, what makes a location Latina-approved is just how it makes you feel when, when you, when you walk inside, you know, feel, making you feel welcome. Um, making you feel like you're at home, making you feel like you belong, like you're represented. Um, fun environment. Uh, yeah, there's a lot of uh, factors, but that, that's what I think. Um, cause when I think of home and I think of, when I welcome you into, into my home, you're gonna be uh, welcomed with open arms. Um, and just have, just feel like a sense of great energy and, and positive uh, vibes around you.
That's great. Tanya, do you wanna add to that at all?
Yes. So really what we give our stamp of approval on things that are Latina-approved, we wanna make sure that they're aligning with our values and our mission as a company, which is being all-inclusive for all Latinos. So if any, if any brand or any restaurant or any company really aligns with those values of who we are, of inclusivity and representation, we're like, okay, we're on the right path on getting Latina-approved, so.
Thumbs up. Um, so I wanna ask all of you, cause I think this is a question I can imagine you have gotten or will get. So if bilingual Latinos speak English, which obviously we all do, um, doesn't English language content reach them? And what, you know, what are the limitations of that kind of thinking? And how do you respond to that? And I'll start with you, Maria.
Oh yeah, sure. Love that question. Yeah, you know, that, that, that's, that's always the issue, right? Well, your English language summons, but what, what people don't realize is that's just one aspect of who I am, my language, right? Uh, my culture is a big part of who I am. I was raised in New Orleans with not very many Hispanic, Hispanics around me. Um, so I didn't feel that culture reflected back. I wasn't validated at, in that way, right? So it's not just about language. It was never just about language. I think, I think we all got off on the wrong track. It's not about, the culture is so much more paramount. Um, yeah, you can reach with English, but you can't touch with English if you're trying to touch a bicultural or bilingual. And those are two completely different things. It took me many years to come up with that answer because brands would tell me all the time, no, we're not gonna have a separate budget for the bilingual, bicultural. Reaching you with our English language media. And I finally told one, you are, you are. I will not deny that you are reaching me, but you're not touching me. And I know that because I'm not brand loyal to your brand, right? So again, it's about the culture. It, it can be primarily in English, but, but for goodness sake, um, inform it with cultural cues that make me know you're speaking to me. And inform it with linguistic cues that say, you know, I am not 100% American assimilated in the sense that it's all English all the time and that my ethos is all about independence and self-reliance, because it's not.
Yeah, and I, I wanna add something. I mean, obviously Maria gave the perfect answer, so there's not much to add to that. But just to, you know, touching on that, again, on the, on the business side. When brands say, oh, we're not gonna have a separate budget, it's idiotic. Because when, when I was at Me Too, we did a study with PWC of like the, and we touched upon it earlier. Maria touched upon the, the circle of influence that Latinos have, not just with Latinos. So we, we did this study and uh, well, PWC did the study, but they analyzed our audiences, which were, were and continue to. which were, were and continue to be massive, on what is the, what is that sphere of influence around a, a, a young Latino? And it was super, super interesting to see how every single demographic, except for Latinos, tend to have the majority of their friends be from that same demographic. So black kids, a majority of their friends are black, Asian, white, it's, Latinos, it's completely the opposite. The least amount of their close network of friends, their friends are just incredibly diverse. So as an answer to these advertisers, if there are any on the phone here, if you have $1 to spend only in your marketing budget, if you want to reach youth, the entry point to all youth is through Latino youth, right? Because if you spend that dollar with somebody that is not a Latino youth, you're gonna reach primarily that exact same community. Black, Asian, white. When you invest your dollar with a Latino youth, your dollar would, will extend to all youth in our community. And the data's there, the research there, PWC is pretty well respected, so it's not something that we came up with. Um, you can Google it and find it. So it's very interesting, again, changing that narrative, changing that preconceived uh, notion of like, okay, no, well, I can't invest it on Latinos because Latinos are old Spanish speakers, only want soaps and they're immigrants and they're poor. That is not true, right? Latinos are thriving, young, educated, everything we know about them. Plus their s- circle of influence, just like we've heard before, is really, really diverse. So if you only have a limited marketing budget, absolutely you need to spend it with us if you want to be reaching all youth in America.
Well, I just wanna, I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. I just wanted to add one, one little point to, to what Beatriz is saying is that uh, there, there is this trend right now, and I forgot where I, where I saw it statistically, but there's this trend of Latino youth reacculturating, uh, retro acculturating back to as much of their Latinidad as possible. I don't know. It might be, it might be, and I'm just, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not into the politics, but it might be that it's a product of the demonization of our culture that has happened over the past number of years. Uh, and, and because of that, there is a sense of, you know, when you, when you're attacked, your family's attacked, your, your Latinidad, your Spanish, your, your culture, you tend to get defensive and you tend to say, Concha, I am fricking Latino, you know? And you, I think that that's a, a trend that I'm seeing where Latino youth today, and this is observation, they've, I feel like they're more fiercely really proud of their roots than they probably would have been five or seven years ago. I feel like there's definitely a trend to Latinidad in terms of like, it's a cool thing to be Latino. It's not something to be looked down on. The problem is, of course, we still have an issue with Hollywood and with other media companies and others that, I mean, other, yeah, media companies, I'm sorry, Hollywood media companies and even some brands that don't really um, spend properly yet in marketing to the Latino community and don't realize what La Beatriz is saying, that our Latino youth is actually driving the majority of the demographic growth, growth of our country. And by extension, the vitality of our country as a nation, right? Really resides on these Latino, this Latino uh, cohort and you might even say, of course, black as well. The minorities are actually becoming the majority and that's, has a lot of implications for brands that are smart and say, let's do it now.
And be forward thinking, yeah. No, Manny, I think you're absolutely right. I know anecdotally, just, you know, I have two daughters. One of them is a big fan of Bad Bunny and the other one just took Spanish for Spanish speakers. And I, I see that retro acculturation, that sense of pride, definitely. Um, I have a question in light of all of that. Um, and I think Maria, you talked about, you know, one of the differences in growing up as a bilingual, bicultural is that you become your family's translator or you put in sherpa, I love that. Um, and you're, and, and in that process, you're offering input for decisions. Um, because you're, you know, you are able to access information that maybe your parents and grandparents can't. Do you feel brands have recognized this and should be considering that?
No, not at all. Thank you for the question, Claudia. Not at all, not at all. Um, I think it's very easy to check a box when you're doing budgets and you say, okay, this is for Hispanics and automatically it's Spanish language media. This is my general market budget. And the reality is, our market is primarily gray. Our market is gray. Talking about Fifty Shades, this is the bilingual, bicultural. We are the majority of this market. And I don't think brands have understood that because we play that role of sherpa, you need to facilitate our life. So how do you do that? Remove some of the burden for me. If I have to go online and search for something and then translate it into Spanish to my mother or find a Spanish app to translate it or spend an hour on the phone explaining what the product is before I purchase it, the brand isn't helping me. So I think there's always an opportunity for brands to have easily shareable Spanish and English content, product descriptions, et cetera. Because I think folks like us that are the sherpas for our families, we reward brands because we end up co-branding for them. If you give me the tools, I will share it with the network that, as Beatriz was talking about. My sphere of influence is totally culturally agnostic. It's not just Spanish, it's American as well. But I am innately um, programmed to share because that's who I was as a child, right? So influence is very important. So I think brands need to step beyond like, it's one-to-one marketing, it's, it's, it's in language and that's all. Look beyond that and look at the behavior of the consumer who's consuming your brand. What role are they playing? How do you facilitate that role so they don't have to do it with your brand? So you can simplify it. They'll spend more time. I promise you, they will reward your brand if you make it easy for them to share and execute their role of sherpa.
Excellent. I wanted to ask you one last question before we wrap up. Um, this came from one of our uh, attendees in the audience. Where do you see Hispanic representation and, in, in TV and streaming in, like, in 10 years from now? Um, and I will ask the younger members. Um, let's start with Tanya. Where do you see this, our landscape in 10 years?
I definitely see a growth. I feel like we're paving a way for this new generation, especially on platforms such as streaming, right? On streaming platform is a growing, it's already a, a growing platform in the general market. So the fact that we're taking this first step to do this in 10 years from now, we're going to have so much bicultural, bilingual content, right? So I definitely see a growth and it all starts with us, right? Where, where some of the people in this room that are creating that path for that new generation and growth has been great, right? Studies show on and on the growth of Latino entrepreneurs or Latino new, uh, content, right? We see that with the growth in our platforms. So um, 10 years from now, I hope that, you know, we are a bigger group and there's more content out there.
Lily, what do you think? Where we'll see Hispanic representation in 10 years?
Yeah, definitely. Um, since we started Latina, we've seen so many more platforms grow. And I think that that's only gonna continue to grow. And like Tanya said, it starts with us. And I think one thing that is challenging within our community is support. I think that we need to support each other more. So I think as long as we continue to support each other and, and share things, and I think that it's a little difficult because we're not used to it. We're not used to seeing ourselves represented. We're not see, we're not used to seeing us being leaders and, and pioneers and starting these um, these projects and businesses. Uh, but we definitely have to support each other to make sure that we're continuing to grow.
Great point. Beatriz, where are we gonna be in 10 years in terms of representation?
I think by, by default, we'll be in a better place. Um, I don't want to wait 10 years, you know, obviously. So there's a lot of us just working to get that representation much faster um, happening. But obviously, as, as, as we become that new American majority and we get to be in places of power, uh, we will need to be over explaining why our stories matter, why we matter, why our community matters. If there's a CEO or a head of a streaming um, company like we have here with Nuestra TV um, that fully understand the importance of our market. So we'll definitely be at a better place by default, but I hope that we can accelerate that uh, much earlier.
Yeah, maybe the question should be five years.
Yes, exactly.
Uh, Manny, what do you think?
Well, look, my, I, I accidentally thrust my daughter into a career in film and, and acting. She's at Emerson studying to be a writer and producer. So I hope, for goodness sake, that, that that has changed. We, we need to see ourselves on screen through platforms like Nuestra TV a lot more. Not just with content that we're producing, but that other creators are going to be contributing as part of what Banano, the empire that he's gonna be building through this. And I think it's a great, uh, it's a great time because through platforms like this and through social platforms, Latinos are more and more empowered to tell their story. I think what's gonna be vital for us to be able to get to the next level is that we continue to refine our, the way that we deliver that content, that our stories are really, really good, that we really master storytelling so that no one has any excuse for not devouring and wanting to have all of our content on platforms like Nuestra TV and, and others. And I'll say that the final thing is, I think by default, you can't stop the train, right? Latinos are the growth engine here. But I think the fact that people like J Lo and others are starting these funds to try to really invigorate this type of process, like has happened already in the black community. Um, I think we are gonna catch the back part of the wave of what happened with BLM. And this is an exciting moment for us in the community because it's gonna, it's gonna lead to better representation across the board.
Great. And Maria, what is your feeling about where we'll be in 10 years?
Well, I think everyone has really covered it, but you know, we will be much closer to being the majority multicultural America across the board. So I think when we talk about minority marketing, it will have a different meaning altogether. But the bilingual, bicultural, I think we'll see a lot more um, across the board in all industries when it comes to marketing, when it comes to content. Um, we're storytelling. I think we'll have authentic representation or that's my hope and my dream. So hopefully we'll have a lot more of that.
That's a good note to wrap up here. I want to thank our wonderful panelists and our audience and invite everyone watching and listening to visit Nuestra TV at www.nuestraTV. And thank you all so very much. It's a pleasure to talk with you.
Thank you.